Hello and welcome to the January 16th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. The board is present along with the town manager, town clerk, town finance. For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of our meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2024. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Also from those. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. First public comment. Alright, I will close the first public comment. We have our public hearing for the adult-use marijuana storefront, 60 Route 236, Silver Therapeutics. James.
We had two comments for the public hearing. One of the comments was from one of the neighbors where they had some issues with patrons turning around in their driveway.
Hi there.
Silver Therapeutics?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're covering that right now.
Oh, good. We're here.
Just covering one of the issues you're aware of is one of the neighbors has brought up the fact that they, the patrons keep turning around in the driveway.
Yeah.
I talked to Josh from Silver Therapeutics and he's mentioned some ideas about lighting to address that issue.
Yeah, we put a sign up.
Please stand up to the microphone.
Oh, sure.
And name and.
Yes, I'm Josh Ferranto. I'm one of the owners of Silver Therapeutics.
Thank you.
So yeah, we actually had a complaint regarding that with our next-door neighbor and we put a enter sign on the other side of the driveway to kind of add some visibility to that. And we're also putting some lighting on there, which should illuminate it at night. So I don't know how long ago that complaint came in, but you know, we are taking steps to address that.
James, what neighbor was that? Did they, what's their name or do you not have it?
It was the Bellamyars. They are, I think, 50, I don't know, they're in the 50s Route 236. They're one of the.
Yeah, we're 60, so I think it was, if you pull out of our driveway to, you know, and take a right, the first individual on the right was the one that complained and then we put the sign up relatively recently. So I don't know if this is a different person and hopefully it's been mitigated by now with that sign. You know, we have to add lighting to it as well, just for more visibility. I mean, I think, you know, obviously you guys are aware of the road and it's a pretty fast-moving road and it's kind of just the nature of where we are, but you know, we're doing whatever we can to just make our store more visible so that that turnaround doesn't happen.
You said there was another comment? Was this, is this the one?
That's it.
Yeah. So the clerk received a phone comment from Steven Bab, 52 Route 236. His comment was, he thinks it's a degradation to the community and he's not in favor of it. And that was, that was it. No details on that. Any comments from the police? Or other issues there? Have any other questions for Josh?
I saw that you had recently increased the size of your parking lot.
We did, yes.
Is, it is, no, I drive by, I don't drive by there regularly, but I drive by. It doesn't seem like there's always that many cars in there, but necessary to increase the size of the parking lot.
Yeah, you know, it's just at certain times, you know, after work, weekends, sometimes there'd just be, you know, a line of people waiting to park and that also can cause a traffic concern. So with the new parking, like all our customers are, you know, really happy about that and it just, you know, people were kind of pulling in areas that weren't actual designated parking. So this has completely mitigated that, that issue, which is great.
Yeah, I know several people who live in the area and they have had no complaints. Nothing's been expressed to me about any difficulties there.
Yeah.
You know, no more so than any other business.
Yeah, I mean, I will say we, you know, really enjoy operating in Berwick. You know, I'm a former resident and we employ a lot of people locally and I can't think of any, you know, major incidents we've had that have needed police other than someone going through our dumpster at one point. And yeah, it's been a, been a joy working with you guys.
My only comment is that I, you know, drive by there pretty often, go into the school or the dump or whatever and it's just, it's a very beautiful building.
Well, thank you.
I mean, it's just very well-designed. It looks very nice, you know? If you took out the signs, it might look like a home, you know?
Yeah. Appreciate that.
If there's no other comments, I'll undertake a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the adult-use marijuana storefront for 60 Route 236 of Silver Therapeutics.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out today.
Yeah, thanks. It was a little bit of a drive, but.
Thank you.
Especially in this month.
Especially on 236.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, no reports of committees, department reports, appointments, unfinished business. Town manager report.
Shannon Rogers and Josh Jones, our rec department, has been meeting with SAT60 to discuss working together on the mentorship program. SAT60 will be using our Building Bridges program as a model for high school and middle school students. They're thinking to have a program that, to mentor kids and as they are entering the eighth grade, they'll have a mentor, a past mentor, that's a senior in high school. And also working with the Building Bridges program, connecting some high-risk youth to some adults. And Shannon's done a wonderful job picking up where Angela left off. We have a group of mentors and just like we heard from one of the public comments, there's a huge need in the community for mentors. So it's exciting to see the town, the school, working together on this project. The town website is due for a refresh. It's part of our four-year contract with a free overhaul of the website. We're working with Elise with Pixels and Pulp to work on a design. We'll have a new front page and some new department pages. And the goal, obviously, you know, we want it to look nice, but also wanted to be accessible and easy to navigate. So Elise is working on the design now and should have some updates in the next coming month or so.
So she volunteers to do that?
She's paid.
Is that something we put out for bid or?
For, it's something that was incorporated in our, in our budget.
So we're ready to do that?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this was budgeted in the last budget cycle. Our Kittery Area Comprehensive Transportation System, CACS, it's an MPO. It's a Metropolitan Planning Organization, a lot of acronyms. It's likely going to have a cost associated moving forward into the next budget year. As part of that MPO, we're going to be responsible for paying a proportion of the match that is part of our, it's called the Unified Planning Work Program, UPWP. This funding.
Vegetable soup.
Here's more. The funding will cover the match that SMPTC used to cover, Southern Main Planning Development Commission. That used to be covered through membership dues. The issue is that the membership in CACS has grown, the UPWP has grown, and there are SMPTC members who are not in CACS. So now this transportation system, we're included in, it's a group that meets sometimes monthly, sometimes about every other month. And the goal over planning projects for the region and working with our transportation planner at SMPTC. So this group includes Kittery, South Berwick, Berwick Elliott, York Wells, Conquit, Kenny Bunk and Kenny Bunford.
What's the, what's the anticipated match?
It's about $7,500. Yeah, it's based on a formula that's mostly based on population. That completes my report.
Any questions for the town manager? Terrific. Alright, accounts payable. Alright. So we have a payroll warrant from January 4th, 2024, in the amount of $80,423.57. We have a payroll warrant from January 11th, 2024, in the amount of $102,074.51. Accounts payable warrant number 47 from January 16th, 2024, in the amount of $106,386.71. And accounts payable warrant number 48 from January 16th, in the amount of $1,427,427.79. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second to motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? New business, new business, bid results, banking RFP.
We receive seven bids. Based off the services they offer and the interest rate provided, we were recommending selecting Andrews-Coggan Bank. This bid is for a five-year term.
And that's what we have right now?
Right now, we have Kenny Bunk Savings. We do, we do use Andrews-Coggan Bank for our lease financing and for short, we have, we use them for some short-term bonds.
So why would we switch then if Kenny Bunk, the percentage is higher and what would be the reason for switching?
So Kenny Bunk Savings actually, they're offering 5%, or yeah, 5% even. So they base it off this thing called the SOFR rate and they deduct a half a percentage point.
Wasn't there another issue with Kenny Bunk Savings that led to this change or wasn't there? Wasn't there like an issue they were having or am I misremembering something?
At one point, there was a banking report. They have an index, they have a red, yellow, green system.
Yeah.
And at one point, they were in the yellow for an extended period of time.
Yep.
And we, we talked to some people that were involved, kind of been, that were involved in banking and they said they weren't, it wasn't that much to be concerned.
Yeah.
They weren't in danger of failing, basically.
Is Andrews-Coggan Bank green?
They're green, yeah. They're in the green.
Any additional questions for the town manager?
So your decision to recommend Andrews-Coggan Bank to Kenny Bunk is based on the .5? Is that the only reason?
Yes, please.
I was gonna say, can we get a fan is directed up to the microphone?
One of the reasons is because right now they have us at a lower interest rate than what they could actually offer us. We had several banks when the interest rate was, was increasing. We had several banks approach us wanting us to move the money and move our money at a higher interest rate. And we said no, that we would prefer to RFP for a bank. And I called Kenny Bunk Savings and asked them to increase the rate and they would not do it. And the, the bid that we have right now says that we would, we would be at 5.5 minus the .5 SOFR. And not only that, but they have a habit of sending checks back to us in our deposit all the time. The date's wrong. It's.
Like payroll checks?
No, no, checks that we've reseeded. I just had to go last week. What day was it? Thursday?
Yep.
Because somebody wrote 11223. I mean, it's assumed that they meant 24. If, you know, the date's wrong in any way, they won't accept it. And they will not accept us just calling the customer saying, hey, there's a mistake on the date, can we fix it? And the customers say yes, so we fix it and then I'll bring it to the bank and they'll make a big fuss like, who did this? Did they come in and actually do this? So it's kind of a house, so we have to have the customer come back, change the date and sign.
And I just feel like the way they, the way they're, the bid is worded, they can drop that rate anytime they want.
So we'd have to change our checks and our, all of our payroll and so.
We try to keep a minimum check stock so that, I mean, so that we, you know, if this, like the last time I ordered, I ordered half of what I normally order because I knew we were going to RFP for a bank, so we wouldn't be wasting a lot of check stock. I know that they need stamps for the deposits downstairs, which we haven't ordered because we were going to RFP for a bank. It is, I mean, it does, it's an initial cost to change everything over, but once it's over, once it's changed over, it's good for five years and possibly longer, depending on if you want to renew with the same bank.
Would payroll, would that be any extra cost with?
No. All I have to do is, no, because we don't even use checks anymore. We try not to. Every once in a while, one slips through.
Yeah.
But we can actually run it, run an accounts payable check for that. We don't have to order check stock for the, for payroll anymore.
So.
Would each.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, you.
Would each employee have to redo their direct deposits?
No.
No. That should be in the payroll system.
Yeah. One of the concerns I had with switching over and I don't, we, I wouldn't be recommending it if I didn't feel like it'd be, you know, including that cost, something that Patty and I have talked about is just, you know, the convenience of having it right there. And Andrews-Coggan seemed to really sell the fact that they have a courier service that runs often and they would do what they had to do to make it work for us. The other part too is they're, they're more, seem to be more government-focused, one of the lead.
Yeah, they have a government banking division where Kenny Bunk Savings does not.
They just have a personal checking account with them?
I don't.
So the courier thing, so if you get checks in, they're gonna pick up every day or?
I don't know. Do you know that?
They, they come twice a week unless we request more, like during tax season, they'll come as many times as we want. They're already in Lebanon, so they just come over here too.
So Lebanon wasn't a reference?
They just, I think he just told me that they just.
Went to Lebanon.
Went to, they just got Lebanon.
The other thing, I'm hoping that we can still maintain some sort of relationship with Kenny Bunk to get change.
Well, they bring change.
Yeah, but sometimes we need it right away.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking we could keep the water, try to keep the water account there.
Oh, okay.
So he has two banks?
Because, because the people at the, at the transfer station deposit all their money at the end of the day, every day, every day they work.
So the transfer station would still have to use Kenny Bunk Savings because it's, it's local.
They don't have to, but I was thinking.
Be convenient to them.
Safer, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. I mean, the only other thing they could do is put it in a night drop here and then we would just include it with our regular deposit during the day. That's the only other option.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to leave the money on site. So the difference would be, the reason for switching would be the interest rate? And they don't, they send checks back? Is that the reason?
Well, with, if we went with anyone else, any other bank other than Kenny Bunk Savings, the only reason we're depositing our checks at the bank right now is because they're right there. We, normally you would have a check reader and we would make all of our own check deposits.
Yeah.
So, so that's automatic every day. And then we'll be doing the work and then cash will be picked up.
Cash will be picked up, I agree. Will finance be doing it or downstairs?
I'll have to do the checks because you have to have access to the bank account to do it, but the cash can just, I mean, we've got two vaults, right?
So this is a change that you're in favor of?
Yes.
James, this is a favorite, this is a change that you're in favor of?
Yes.
I know that you don't have as much stake in it, but are you in favor of this change as well?
Yes. I have a few more questions, but I'll talk to Lisa about them.
Yeah, that's the point, exact point I was gonna make. Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we award the banking services to Andrews-Coggan Bank on the recommendation of our staff.
For a period of five years.
Period of five years.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Reschedule of the March 5th, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
Yes, it's the primary election. So I would like to postpone it till the next Tuesday if possible.
You don't want to be up all day for the election and then have to stay the next day for, for a meeting. And that's just, that, all that is the primary election, right? That's all that's going on that day?
Yes.
Okay. So the following would be March 12th, right?
Oh, seriously?
What, you can't do it?
No, it's my birthday.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't do that day either, I have a meeting.
Alright, I mean, we could do March 6th.
I'm only being, for these issues, like, be here.
Oh.
It was just, be a fool, sorry.
But Lisa, you can't.
March 6th, does anybody have any issues with March 6th?
Got it.
What? March 6th.
I cannot be here on March 6th. Okay. I have a question.
It's totally up to you guys.
I, but I can do the 12th if that. I mean, I, I can change it if that's what we really want to do. I can, you know, not go, but I should.
Is it a vacation?
No, I have another meeting, but.
I'm open to any other suggestions? If not, March 12th is the day.
Well, couldn't we go back, I mean, could we do the 4th? It's Monday. Or is there another meeting in this room?
I don't think there is.
The night before the election?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's probably not a good idea.
Depends on what is on our agenda.
Right.
It was like last time, last meeting, sure.
Yeah. Make it light.
Listen, I don't really want to skip it in budget season just in case.
That's what I'm saying, that, like, just to get it done.
Wednesday, the 13th?
I can do that.
So we'd have.
Close till Wednesday, then after the following Wednesday.
Okay.
So that the 13th and the 19th.
Yeah. Does anybody have a problem with that, March 13th?
No.
Oh. I'll make a motion to reschedule the March 5th, 2024 meeting to March 13th, 2024, which is a Wednesday.
Second thought.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Please remind us to be a.
Yeah, I know. I'm changing the name.
Alright. Propose amendment to the naming town-owned property and placement of memorial objects policy. James.
The purpose of this amendment is to set a discounted price at $750 for 501(c)(3) organizations who like to participate in the bench program. So I was approached about, you know, a discounted price and I figured it would make sense to just do it across the board and set the price. The reason I think it's a good idea is just encourages use of the program.
So the $750 covers the cost of the bench, correct?
Most of the bench. And it, you know, it covers three-fourths of the cost of the bench. And yeah, it goes, it'll go back into the program and we initially purchased six benches out of the TIF.
Yep.
Which is part of our development program for Greenway amenities. So we can always do that again for just more from the TIF or, you know, the 750 helps to cover some of those costs.
So I'm just trying to make sure I understand this right. So is everybody paying 750 or is just the, the 501(c)?
Proposing the 501(c), just the, if it's a charitable 501(c)(3) organization, that if they're dedicating a bench.
But if it's me coming off the street, what do I pay?
It would be the cost of the bench plaque and installation.
Okay.
Which is, right now, it's about $1,500.
Okay.
So, so you say that's almost half. So a towns person, say somebody's family wanted to donate a bench, would have to pay 1,500?
That was, and that's, so maybe, and I was, I was going back and forth on that too. I think we maybe just set a flat price at $750, $750. I don't.
Isn't that, what, I don't know what you mean. Like, that, that doesn't cover the cost of the bench though.
Yeah, we gotta cover the cost.
Well, if, if, if we, if we're linking it into the, the Greenway and the walkability of the downtown area is that's, some of the, some of the money from the TIF is, can be used for that. That's one of the things we talked about with the walking paths and stuff is that was all of the proposal for the TIF to use that to draw people into the downtown, to make it more usable and people-friendly, so.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I just think that there shouldn't be two prices. I mean, because citizens pay taxes and if they want to, you know, that's coming out of probably one or two people's pocket as opposed to a whole organization, that probably has a better ability to raise money to dedicate a bench to the town. I think, I just think a 50% discount is a little.
Here's my question, how much interest or, how much? How many people have approached you about name, using this bench program, the naming?
So far, three have expressed interest. Two, what's that?
And one of them has been this 501(c)?
One has been the 501(c)(3), yep.
Okay.
And the other two would pay full price.
Indicated that they'd be interested in, yeah.
Yeah, I'm one of them. From the very beginning, I've talked about getting a bench, you know, to honor my parents and, you know, if it costs me $1,500 to put a bench up, is I'll find the money to put $1,500 or put the bench up. But the 501(c)(3)'s is, I would, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, using some of the TIF money if it's available, you know, to cover the cost. But as far as how much, I have no, no clue of what would be equitable and fair and is, you know, as I said, the, the TIF is specifically to be used to improve the downtown.
Right, but can't the TIF be used for someone who personally wants to buy a bench as well? It's for the nonprofit? So wouldn't the price be the same?
Price, I mean, the price, the price very well could be 750 for everybody. And then that way, as we go forward.
I can buy two benches.
The memorial. We just so happened to stumble this, like, this idea, this memorial bench program.
No, I'm in total support of the memorial bench program. I just. Right, it's a huge gap to say. Do we put a limit on how many benches? So that we're not always paying for benches? Well, no, because I mean, eventually too, they're gonna go to Memorial, go to the field, right?
They, they also all require board approval.
Oh, okay.
So, so nobody can just come in and name a, and name a, 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 a bench for Adolf Hitler and we have to just deal with it.
Right.
And we, we get to, we actually have approval of the name. And we, we get to, we actually have approval of the naming rights.
Right, the actual, what's on the plaque.
He, my question is, I thought we had discussed the possibility of there being, if people wanted to pay less, they'd pay for half a bench. Like, you could have a bench with two memorial plaques on it, you know, and that, that would be the solving of the, of the price issue, you know, that you'd only have to pay for half.
We did talk about that.
Yeah.
But, but you, but again, your, the organization was gonna, is gonna get a whole bench, so it isn't really a.
No, 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 what I'm just saying is that, like, if, if the, if the question is, like, if, if, if a charity comes and says, "We want to name a bench X," and they go, "But we don't have $1,500," that's fine, they don't get a whole bench, they get half the bench. And somebody else who also only had $750, they also get half the bench.
Right, and I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying is, if you're gonna use TIF money to install them and do that anyways, then can't you just come up with a reasonable price for anyone who buys a bench? Because then it's flat. And I was saying, it has to be $750, maybe it's $1,000, you know, or $1,200 because the total is $1,500. I'm just saying it should be one price for everybody, whether you are, you know, an organization or something of that nature, I just.
We've technically already subsidized it because we've already bought the benches, so.
Right, but we're gonna get, right, well, how much do the actual benches cost?
Fifteen?
Yeah, it's about, it's about $1,000 for the bench, $250 for.
So $1,000 covers the actual bench? And then $500 covers the installation and.
And the plaque.
All right, so if you make it $1,000 or $1,200, you're, you're covering cost. You know, and if it's a little bit more cost when they're doing other things, you can use TIF money to cover that. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, using TIF money to put the benches in and covering the cost. I just don't like the huge gap between if, you know, a citizen who pays taxes wants to put one up and a nonprofit that wants to put one up. I just think it should be a little bit more reasonable. Very equitable, thank you.
So, yeah, we'll, we should probably table this right now and come back to it with.
Yeah, okay.
I like the idea of the policy that you have spelled out here, I did like that. It's, it's, you know, clear, I just, the money thing just, you know.
So, we'll, we'll come back.
I'll be back by then.
You'll be back.
You know, we love to beat you up, so. We will, do we need to make a motion to table that or just we just stick table?
No, it's fine.
Cool. Proposed expansion of the, to police parking and impound area.
This proposed project will expand the police parking by six spaces and will also provide a space to hold impounded vehicles. Police have had significant issues with impoundment being held off-site. There are liability issues holding vehicles off-sites as they could be part of an investigation and large fees can accumulate that the town could potentially become liable for. This project does require planning board approval. So tonight I am requesting to earmark some asset forfeiture money towards this project in the amount of $17,900 and just seeking approval to be able to move this project forward and apply towards planning board approval.
So hypothetically, if we set aside this money for this project and the planning board kills it, the money doesn't go away, we still get to use the money later, but right now, the money, the, the project is hypothetically funded if everything else goes through planning correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
Is the PD currently paying on impounded vehicles off-site?
There's been, there is one case where if it's, if it's held up, going through the process, there's just, recently there is a, a good, there's a real possibility that the town would have been on the hook for it.
Been on the hook for what?
For the impoundment fees.
Okay.
Even vehicles held up in the.
So currently, right now, if someone gets a, you know, they impound a vehicle in a, in a traffic stop, where do we take it?
It goes to, like, auto body.
It used to go to firewalls.
That's what I thought.
No anymore.
It goes to.
They charge.
That's what I was asking.
That's, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, they, they charge a fee to keep it, and it's a daily fee. And if a case is going through the court, I, I talked to the chief about this because we're talking about the community guard next door. And, you know, if, if, say, say, a, a case goes on for months and months and the impound fees keep plowing up, a lot of times that vehicle isn't worth their impound.
Well, and that was gonna be my question because at this point, okay, yes, we're gonna set money aside, but if we're already paying for these, eventually this just pays for itself.
Right.
Plus it's, plus it's in a more secure location for the.
It's like $18,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, $18,000 for six spaces, wow. But, I, I get it, the fence, everything.
If I'm, if I'm honest, $18,000 for six spaces, professionally done, that sounds about right to me.
Well, with the fence and everything.
Yeah, with the fence.
And two gold grable.
Two axes and, no, I.
I mean, the price isn't my question, my only question is, is, will this save the town money, you know, this, in the next couple of years? Will this, will this, will this tangibly save us money in the long run? That's my question.
I have to get back to how much we, if we've actually spent money on impoundment fees. I just know that if a vehicle's held up and the case is dismissed and now the person that had their car impounded for $12,000, he says, "Well, we're not paying it," then that's.
Yeah.
That's kind of where we're.
So if, if the, if the police compound a vehicle and the case is dismissed, are the police on the hook for the, for the impoundment fee, not the, not the person? I mean, I would assume that it wouldn't be the person because it'd be, seem arbitrarily weird to do that, you know?
That's what they're, that's what.
Yeah. I have no problem earmarking that right now, but I would like to get hard numbers on that also for future reference. Just to.
Sure.
To justify it.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we set aside $17,900 of asset forfeiture money toward the expansion of the parking lot for the police station.
Second thought.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. No quitclaim needs, abatements. Hello?
Good evening.
Hey, Paul.
Hello, good evening, good evening. Okay, we have three items. The first one is an abatement for personal property account 1016, 12 Sullivan Street, Mint Dental. These, they were taxed incorrectly or improperly, I guess, because they did file a timely Betty application that we overlooked. Most of the equipment, except for a few items, were, were eligible for the abatement for the program. The remaining items were granted an abatement back on November 21st of '23. It is recommended that we abate the, the personal property tax of $1,301.10.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion that we grant the abatement of $1,301.10 to account number 1016, 12 Sullivan Street, Mint Dental.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Abatement granted.
All right, the next one is a tree growth penalty. The subject prop, this is, our subject property is map R49 lot 3, located on School Street. It's a 62.88 acre parcel. The subject property was placed in the main tree growth program in, in 1999. 11.4 acres of the property are classified as open space. The remaining 51.4 acres has been classified in the main tree growth program. This classification provides for the valuation of land based on its current use as tree growth for commercial harvesting and timbering of open space rather than being valued at potential fair market value for uses other than agriculture or conservation. When the prop, the property was transferred to a new owner on June 25th of 2021, according to main statutes, when it, when the land is classified in the main tree growth program has been transferred to a new owner, the new owner has one year from the date of transfer to provide a new plan or provide a statement from a forester that the land is being managed in accordance with the existing harvest management plan. So failure of, of the new owner to comply would result in two, resulted in two $500 penalties for non-responding before the property must be removed from the program. So the assessing office, as of January 10th of 2024, the property owner has received letters requesting compliance with no response. The notices were dated as follows, we sent one out on November 3rd of 2021, December 27th of 2021, June 27th of 2022, and July 5th of 2023. They have, they have not responded to any of these requests and therefore we are recommending a tree growth penalty, in an open space penalty, be issued in a supplemental assessment, and a supplemental assessment be issued in the amount of $44,190.
Have they responded, have, have you been able to get ahold of them in any way? Have you talked to a human being about this at all?
We've talked to them, but they've said that they're not gonna, you know, that they don't have to do it. And we've insisted they do, according to main law. We, it's a, it's clearly spelled out in.
You verbally, you verbally have spoken to them, they haven't responded to theirs, but, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're just, they're just stonewalling at this point.
Right, right. And it's, it's owned by So Solar Incorporated, so we anticipate that there's gonna be a change in use of that property at some point. Right now it's still vacant land, but they still have not complied with, you know, the, being able to remain in current use in the tree growth of the open space program.
I'd love to see them come in here and ask for approval of a solar farm with, with $44,000 outstanding or whatever.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the tree growth penalty in the amount of $44,190 for So Solar Inc. for tax map lot R049-3.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, and the final one is, is a, a tree growth penalty, basically, for map R052, lot 2. It's a lot off of Old Sanford Road, 32.08 acres. Again, the, when the property was transferred, you know, you need to file within the, within a year a new, new property management form, a forest management for harvest plan, I'm sorry. And we have not, we have contact, contacted the owner, this is Steve Brown, several times, and he has not, you know, been willing to do that. We contacted him on December 21st of 2021 and July 5th of 2023, requesting an updated plan. So the failure to comply has resulted in a second $500 penalty against this parcel. It is recommended that the board approve the $500 supplemental assessment fee.
Did you, this says second assessment fee, so you issued the first and?
We issued the first, and I believe it was paid.
Okay, well, that's confusing.
Well, because we paid the first.
Yeah, exactly.
Then he's fully admitting.
He's aware, he's aware of the situation, he's just not done anything about it. That's very confusing. Any other questions?
And I'll make a motion to approve the recommended $500 supplemental assessment for tax map lot R052-2 off of Sanford.
No second thought.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much, have a, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, second public comment. All right, we have no executive session, any other business, non-agenda items anybody wants to bring up? I'll just say that I want to give a good thumbs up to Town Works. They were out there plowing the last two storms and, and also, for some reason, they had crazy amount of garbage to take care of at the transfer station after New Year's and they were out there doing their best and did a great job, didn't hear any complaints. Town kept moving, that's the best thing you can say about them. So we are going to adjourn and go into our budget review. So, anything else? I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Hope, I'm assuming, can't see the preview. All right, James, let's start this off.
All right, welcome to the first 2024, 2025, fiscal year 25 budget review. Tonight we have, I have a full review and we have five budgets to go over. I'd like to start with town clerk, so she can go home. Meeting things, if that's okay with you guys?
Yeah, we were trying to stretch out her days as much as we could.
Town clerk, we're gonna go last page, you know? Full, full-time wages, we'll get into the program, 5% for non-union, I'm sure that'll be a discussion point for after. It also includes union wage increases, which are 4% for the rest of the department. And then part-time wages, this includes a part-time customer service and a part-time general assistant, case worker. All of that, everything's reflected from those personal changes. And then we just increased materials and supplies to increase to the anticipated usage. So overall, it's a 5.5% increase?
So you have election wages, those are election workers, right?
Yes.
And you, you didn't max that out last year, so. The same, is printing the same as also like printing all the ballots and everything?
No, printing just is for the annual town report.
So would the election supplies be printing the, the ballots and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's general election this year, so usually that.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, a full.
It includes all the services, we have the, everything put on a thumb drive, so it's for the DS200 machine that actually takes the ballots and reads them. It's the printing of the ballots, so all of that.
So everything looks pretty flat for the most part. Are you happy with it?
I am, yep.
Something you would change?
Well, I always would change wages, but.
Change your own wages, I'm sure, we could add extra zero.
My chef is union, so I don't have much say in that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, if I, I can have a conversation with James about my wage at some point.
Memberships. Seems like that's been actually like maxed out in the, in the past budget.
Yep. We had two GA caseworkers, so that didn't work out. So those were two memberships that were paid for and.
Okay, and that's getting a slight increase.
The deferred comp, is that because people are not choosing? Or not selecting to?
I don't know what that is, Lisa.
That's just the 457.
I think there's only one person, maybe two.
It's one.
One person that takes it down there.
Really?
Yeah.
What's the, I'm just curious, what's the match?
It's 2% if you have main state retirement and 4% if you don't have main state retirement.
Well, only one person takes it?
Others need their wage to live on in the now.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that I do. Any other questions for the town clerk? That I think we're probably pretty good.
Other components, general assistance.
Other components, general assistance.
Yeah, so at this point, we're already at 26.6. I have 20,000 budgeted. We do get um, 70% back from the state, but that goes back into the general fund. So typically, I'm in the red. At least I would think about mid-year for GA. But that's not accurate because the reimbursement does come back to the town. But there is an uptick in GA applications.
There's a big push to go from 70% to 90%.
Yes.
70% of what?
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement from the state. There is a um.
Is that likely to happen?
Yes.
That's gonna be my follow-up question.
Yes, there's.
At least for one year.
If it hasn't been approved already, I don't know. I should look that up, but I haven't yet.
So under food assistance, you budgeted $1,000? And you only, this is 89? For 2023?
Yeah, that's probably accurate. Um, food assistance, we don't see a lot of that. I also do Salvation Army. So if someone comes in for food, instead of putting them through the GA process, I'll do a Salvation Army voucher.
Okay, so there's other options.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Our biggest ones, we see our electricity, fuel, and housing.
Okay. And then the burial assistance, we didn't budget for that, but we spent 2,000. How often in the last couple of years have that even come up?
There's usually two to three a year.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't budget anything for it?
I don't know why that came out of the budget. It's been zero for years. But again, like this.
You had the ARPA money this year, so that's our lot. Um, you used ARPA money this year for burial?
Not for everyone, though.
Oh.
Yeah. If they qualified, I didn't.
But have you had any since July?
No.
Yeah.
No, so I don't think we've had any this year so far.
I think the reason why we put money in there for this year was because we spent money last year and we didn't have anything budgeted. So we we put money in there. But then I know that there was at least one person that was that the burial was from the ARPA money.
So you you had, last few years, you've had ARPA money to use, so you haven't had to budget. Now that's, you gotta put something back in.
Yeah. We'll see, at least two. But it depends if they qualify also. Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, but.
And is the qualification the same as?
It's different because the client is actually the deceased. So we have to get financial statements. Um, have to see relatives that could be required to pay. A lot of times, it's it's always referred to by the funeral director. So we work with the family and the funeral director.
Got it, okay.
How much are you seeing already with an increase in fuel and electricity needs in the town?
Fuel is just starting to come in. I had two emergencies today, one last week.
How do you define an emergency? Like they're out of fuel and they need they need like a delivery today? How do you facilitate that? Like?
We work it out as best we can. Usually, it depends when they come into the office. If they come in at 3 o'clock, I'm not gonna get the delivery that day. So it's usually for the next day.
You're able to like call oil delivery and be like, we need a delivery ASAP today sort of situation?
Do we have like a preferred vendor or do we use their vendor?
We use Beeline, which is local.
Okay, cool.
He's great about going out to people. I've got two homeless people that I'm working with now too that are in hotels. So that's another thing we're seeing. Once winter hits, we don't see as much CMP because they can't shut you off in the winter. So those will start up again in spring.
Yeah, and once in April, they get the disconnect notices, they'll be coming back.
Exactly, so that's what happens. But then we lose the homeless emergency housing people because it's warm again, so they don't come in.
Got it.
Everything looks low to me, other than the rent assistance seems a little bit high, but I think I wonder if you could use more on the other things. It doesn't seem like this a lot for the whole town.
Well, you can see the actual from 2023 is 22,244.
For rent assistance, yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing, fuel, same thing, you know. Well, that's why I saw the burial, but even electricity. But yeah, I mean, just because the rents are so high that you help one or two people and you're you're depleting.
The way GA works, if it's an emergency, we can go over their allotted amount, what they qualify for. With oil, it goes by gallons. Every month is different, like January is 225 gallons. That's as high as we can go. And that's January, February. And then it goes down every month. And we don't supply it in the summer months. Um, so the numbers you see for like electrical, for a person, a one family, a one-person household, I believe the max is like 98.50. So that's all that we can pay towards CMP. So a lot of times, if they're getting disconnected, I can go above. But that's why you see $998, thinking that's nothing. But that's 10 people, most likely.
And for the record, you know, 2023, 2024, 2025, these are these are strange times you've been living in. But for the the five years before this, it was $10,000 a year.
Right.
We didn't, I don't think we maxed it out any of those years in my memory. I don't think we did. So we're we're in unprecedented times right now. We're we're in the history times, so.
Where does propane follow? What if someone has propane instead of?
We have to use whoever owns the tank.
Yeah.
So they would have to give us who that is.
Okay. And they have the same regulations? I mean, I don't know much about propane, to be honest with you.
It would be the same thing, the amount of gallons. And it's the going rate, whatever that is.
Any other questions about general assistance?
So we we've already used 22,000 for rent assistance. But yet, in 2024, we're back down to 13?
That was my question.
In 2023, we actually used 22,000.
Right.
We approved 13,000. And so far, year-to-date, we've used 7,000.
That's what I mean, we're on track to blow through that.
Right.
Yeah.
But again, that'll slow down come March, April.
March, April, okay.
A lot of times, people are in the process of receiving SSI or SSDI. So we have to help them until that happens. And they sign an IAR, which is kind of Social Security will reimburse the town once they get their SSI or SSDI.
Retrue out back.
So again, it's something that goes back to the general fund.
Again, all these numbers that we're putting out are pre-reimbursement state too, so.
Yes.
So we will get most or all of it back?
Right now, 70%.
70.
Or potentially 90.
And if they need more, we can reallocate from the general fund, you know, toward the end of the year. So it's not like this is, if it needs a little bit, what?
General assistance is is one of the two accounts that we can legally overdraw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never worry if I'm in the red.
No.
Because they reimburse.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So on wages, I just know that you've had a general assistance person back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
So you've been doing that job when they're gone. How many weeks this year have you had a general assistance person? Um, just, just what, just, you don't have to give me a second. Two months, one month?
About two months, I would say. Well, maybe like one and a half months, to be honest, yeah.
So you're doing the work of your job and part-time person, is that person part-time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with it, yeah. How many, do you know if there are other, the other clerks in the area, do they do both?
Some do, some don't. Like the towns that we're in with GA that we use the same qualifying criteria. It's Berwick, South Berwick, Kidderi, Elliott, and um, one other one, I can't think of it off the top of my head. But out of those five, oh, Berwick, South Berwick, Elliott, Kidderi, and one other. But anyway, out of the five, only two of the town clerks are the GA administrators.
If you hit the really big towns, they have entire departments just for the.
Yeah, yeah, I see. So before this year, how often were you without a general assistance person?
It was typically the deputy town clerk was the caseworker and I was the administrator. Um, but we were seeing maybe 10 clients a year. And there to now, it's like 10 clients a month.
Like I said.
Which is why I wanted, the deputy has a huge workload. She didn't have time to do the GA. I don't have overtime in my budget. So, you know, she couldn't possibly do both. So, which is why we created the GA caseworker position part-time.
And that's been filled now?
It's been filled, but we just let the person go again, so it's open again.
How hard has it been to stack that since we put it in?
The last two that we used didn't work out. So I'm hoping the third time's the charm.
What's the pay range on that, Joe?
$21 an hour.
Is that a range or a flat number?
That's a flat. And it's 18, 18 and a half hours a week.
Yeah, I'd take it if I could.
So when no one's there, you're doing it?
Mm-hmm. Typically, as the administrator, I would just oversee the program. I would do the monthly reimbursements to the state.
Right.
All of that.
Now, you have to actually meet with the people, go through the process. And that takes time away from your other responsibilities. Another these?
I imagine sometimes those people aren't all really easy to deal with. And it probably takes a long time when they're in there.
Some, honestly, some cases can take a whole day because you're calling to verify stuff, arranging hotel stays if you have to. Yeah, there's a lot involved. You know, an easy, typical case takes maybe a couple hours.
So just for reference down the road, because I don't want to take a more time. But James, can you, or Lisa, can you, these are summary sheets? Can we get a breakout of the department, like individual salaries and ease of service, that kind of thing? It doesn't have to be 10, I'm just saying, can we get that general information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any other questions about general assistance?
Oh, yeah. That's what I wanted.
Yep.
I think you're safe for now.
Great, have a good night.
Good night, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, James?
All right. So I want to hit some the high notes to give an overview of the entire budget while you're going to tip our individual budget items. This is a draft, obviously, the process at this point. We sent out a budget request forms, maybe a month and a half ago at this point, two months ago.
At least two months ago.
The departments, they drafted up their budget based off their needs.
I did, yeah.
And we met with them individually to go over their budgets, kind of figure out what are the needs? What are the wants? What can wait till next year? That type of thing. And then I've looked back around with a couple of them. Um, so this is their first first draft. I included both operating budget and capital because they're they're obviously tied together. Um, as I mentioned, we plugged in 5%. Um, I I know there's there is a town manager listserv, this was a couple of months ago. There's one other town doing 5% that I'm aware of. A lot of them just do the inflation and everywhere in between. The Teamsters general unit across the board is receiving 4%. Fire captains are receiving 4% and a 25% increase for the captains. For a couple of them, that works out to 4.6%. The two police sergeants are programmed as part of their MAP contract is 5%. And the rest of the non-union police officers are 4%.
So the the rest of the non-union police officers?
Union.
Union.
So.
You said non-union police officer, I didn't think there was.
The union police officers are 4%, yes.
Okay, all right. I was like, do we have?
Sorry, the only non-union police officers are chief town and captain.
I was gonna say.
That's what I thought, okay.
So there are.
Yep, one reserve.
And the reserves are not in the union?
No.
No, okay. Curious, so you said one reserve. Is there's a flat rate or do they get percentage increases?
They get percentage increases.
I brought the idea behind the 5% proposal. So inflation this year, it's, I think it's 3.4% they close the year. Last year was 8%. Last year, we had 6% cost of living. Year before that, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe inflation was four and a half. I don't believe we had four and a half percent increases.
I think we had four.
Four, so. I mean, I'm sure, like, we can always loop back around to wages. I can just go over the other other costs and just kind of like a working model of projections of where I think we're at if we decided to approve this budget, as is what it would be to the taxpayers and what are contributing to it.
Can I go back and just ask one question?
Yeah.
When was the last year that they did a wage study? In Berwick?
Um, we haven't done an official one ever since I've been here. I um, I mean, we can have one done.
Um, we don't necessarily, there's so many that are already out there, like the state does one that's available. And.
I know Betsy has one.
Yep, I was just gonna say, Betsy has one.
Yeah.
Plus, if you're looking at specific positions, Cassidy should be able to do that just by calling around, going to the MLGRH group, which Betsy collects anyways, so you might just get it from her. But I'd be kind of interested to see with some of these.
So would you prefer more of a wage wage survey than do some sort of cost of living?
Wage studies, I'll be honest with you. I know that they're very expensive if you hire a company to do it. And I feel like that the information's already out there. You can just tell.
You know how much you pay people, so.
Right. And, you know, relative to the size, but.
And the the plan for, so one of the projects we're doing with our both Cassidy and our HR consultant is to do first, we're in the process, we're reviewing our job job descriptions.
Yeah.
So get to really know what each department and each staff is doing and then developing an actual wage scale. So that's the goal, and I meant. So that's the goal, and I mentioned before, but the goal for the wage scale would be to have it in place for fiscal year twenty-six budget.
But that would already place people that are here, so that would, a wage scale is most beneficial for people that you're trying to hire, recruit, or, you know. But if someone's already here, it'd be nice to know where they are, you know, where their range is for that particular position or whatnot. And that's kind of, that's kind of outside of a wage scale that you set up, because that scale, once it's established, will be for anybody coming in, and then you've got to place the people who are already here. But if they're not in an equitable spot, when you put them on a scale, you're just exaggerating the issue that you already have, and the wage scale won't help. That's why I'm just, and again, maybe there's nothing, I'm just curious.
And some people may be over.
Right, some may be over, some people may be under.
And then a special circumstance, like we just had with Patty, you know, she's been doing another job, and we might have somebody that's not doing part of a job, that they used to, I mean, there could be all different situations of people that are already here.
Exactly, that's why I'm saying, it just, it makes more sense to look at that. I mean, if everything's in line, then you say you have one flat rate, fine. But if not, maybe you should look at some equity first. Out of that, maybe do a four percent, and then do a one percent equity in other places, if that is the case. I don't know that it is, that's why I'm asking you.
Right, so that'd be equity, like a market-based adjustment, that's another way of saying market-based.
Yes, that's exactly it, yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to say, thank you. But instead of...
I mean, it could be that your numbers are perfectly fine.
Exactly.
But we did, what she's asking for is more information, so that we know that it's fine.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
I think, you know, Noah already said it, we're kind of in, we're in different times, right? And I think when you look at the, the other communities around here and some of the tax brackets, we all know how hiring is a challenge, and I think we just want to make sure that everybody's where they can be, you know?
Yeah, and not only hiring, but retaining, you know, the employees that we do have, that we've already trained, that already have experience with our town. Because none of these towns are that far apart, that if you, if someone is underpaid, or their wage is not even in range, they're going to easily look to go somewhere else. And then, you know, we've let it walk out the door.
Start a little.
Right.
You'll probably pay more.
So I think Noah said it right, it could be perfectly fine, I don't know, I'm just asking for more information.
Yeah, we want MMA, and you can check with Betsy, and check out all the other, I know BAP did one last year, but...
Yes, they did, Erica did. Yeah.
Just too bad, it just seems like even salary data from one or two years ago, it just seems...
That's...
It really is right now.
Like, trying to look at the real estate market from two years ago, what are you talking about? Doesn't match up to anything that today is.
That's why, you know, these outside companies that do wage studies, by the time the information comes out...
You just pay it for...
Right, because they take anyway from twelve to eighteen months to complete, and you're like, I got the answers before it comes out.
So just wanted to zoom out before we zoom back in to the, to the actual section. So just going into some of the cost assumptions. We don't know, education, I think on average, we've seen about a six and a half percent increase, so that's what we're plugging in now. Six and a half increase is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. One of the costs that was offset last year, that we're now offsetting this year, is we used the fire station. Old fire station sale offset the cost of the bond. So I'm just pointing out increases from last year into this year. The fire department, they will obviously get more into this in the next coming couple of weeks. Initially, Chief Plant requested four new full-time firefighter EMTs, and he'll tell you on the twentieth, it's a need and it's coming. But he's, you know, we talked, and he's comfortable with going with two. So that's what the increase you see there, that is reallocating some of the per diem funds for two full-timers. But obviously with health insurance and...
Yeah.
That's retirement, that's where you get to that increase. The, the high note for the police department is they're, like they requested last year, they're requesting a full-time officer. We're pulling a little bit of part-time funds, but for the most part, that's the increase you see in that budget. Public, the public works increase is actually just by the fact of lead times in our lease program. We had a vehicle come off the lease purchase program, so we dropped the budget by sixty-some thousand dollars last fiscal year. So if you compare the budget from last, two years ago to this year, it's a pretty, it's a pretty reasonable increase. So one of the things we, we've talked about is, we have two pots of money we pull for road, road budgets. We have undesigned fund balance, and we have the tax base. So proposing to increase that by fifty thousand, which would mean we're funding out of the taxpayers three hundred, three hundred thousand, and proposing to use five hundred thousand of a designated fund balance, so overall eight hundred thousand dollars for road paving. For the library increase, that's a part-timer going full-time, and that will allow the library to be open a full day on Thursday. They open at two-thirty on Thursday, this would allow them to open up at eight-thirty. So those are the, those are the major increases, and like I said, we'll, we'll get more into those as the budget cycle unfolds. But I just wanted to hit the high notes, to give you some of that context.
And that education amount is not set in stone, that's just your prediction. And they meet, what, tomorrow? I think, I think the... They meet this week or whatever.
Yeah, Thursday.
Are they starting, have they, have they been working on their budget? I haven't been watching all their stuff. They haven't been publicly, but I'm sure they've been working on it.
Yeah, I'm sure that's doing.
They're gonna drop a sixteen million dollar budget on our faces, so...
Yeah, so a little bit further down, you have, let me just see it, I marked it, town clerk increase, is that, is that a wage increase?
That is just, that's just the overall budget increase.
Okay, overall office.
So it's the exact increase, so that's that five point five percent increase.
Okay.
So that's the entire budget increase from the last fiscal year.
And you're budgeting twenty thousand for the paid family leave?
Yeah, because it comes effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Six months.
So six months in, so that's, yeah. It's gonna be really curious to see where that goes.
Yeah, it's, could benefit, but yeah, that's gonna be...
It's definitely a good benefit, it's just, I've been watching very closely where it's been coming out of, and some of the, I'm sorry, the lack of requirements to qualify is just amazing. It's, I think it's gonna get way, used way more than people anticipate.
No doubt about it. All right, we'll go into planning in future. I do have a scenario for planning that does not include a director of community and economic development. I'll have in the budget, an option that shows you what that looks like by using TIF funds and the tax base. So that's something I want to propose to the board to consider, start that dialogue. So again, you'll have full budget books by the next meeting, they'll have the budgets, the wage sheets, budget justifications, and more data and charts, more colorful charts. So with all that said, and with some projected revenues, we are looking at a pretty sizable tax rate increase of one dollar eleven cents from eighteen thirty-two to nineteen forty-three, and that would represent a six percent increase to the tax rate. I will, I will note, so by doing our revaluation, the homestead will become a full value, and based on a three hundred thousand dollar house, that will save seventy-three dollars. So a grand overall increase for a homestead would project to be two hundred and sixty dollars in added property taxes. And I do want to note that we are doing the revale, and tax, the tax rate will be lower, but I just wanted to be fully transparent that if this budget goes as posed, there will be an actual tax increase that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the revaluation unless someone's property value went up. But everyone's, what's expected with the revale is everyone's property value's gonna go up, but if we kept the budget the same, the tax rate would go down. Tax rate's going to go down, but it'll go down a little bit less, because the actual amount of taxes we are charging are going up.
Your house is worth more, you're paying more, but the tax rate won't be less.
On the back, it just shows the breakdown of town and education in different ways. The budget breakdown is pretty interesting, if you look at the percentages. I have some data from a few years ago, I have data from twenty twenty that I'll bring forward. The actual breakdown's fairly similar going back in the years, it's... And I wanted to, next, on the next page, for capital, this is in the draft form, some of these will need to be reduced, the recent calculations on the undesigned fund balance. The estimated spendables at a million, and projecting that our revenue share will come in at two hundred thousand dollars, higher than what we estimated. So estimating our fund balance is around one point two million dollars, it fluctuates. And we are not, we're not anticipating the fund balance to grow like it has in the past. So for next fiscal year, we're not gonna have a million dollars to spend on fund balance. So I wanted to point that out going into this budget season. The capital improvements shown, FIRE has pretty standard requests for their capital, to stay up with their equipment needs. Aero replacement is one of the fire trucks that is old, and we know we're gonna need to replace. The tax DOT match, trying to squirrel away some money to go and, we can go and take, and go get eighty, that's a twenty percent match to go get eighty percent of a grant. With police, we're considering, we're proposing, we're going away from a lease to a purchase program, rather than leasing vehicles, are just, I'm all right, now that interest rates are now as advantageous. Police has a security system, they need to update. For public works, the, their fuel control system is near end of life. As I mentioned, for roads, using a half a million dollars of undesigned fund balance, and the other three hundred thousand dollars from taxes. Air compressor, they have an air compressor from, it's very old. For town hall, bathroom, we had bathroom remodel in there for a while, but I don't think we need to remodel our bathrooms, we can do some, you know, cheap and cheerful improvements. I plugged in fifty thousand for the clock tower railing, I don't know if that's in the ballpark, I don't...
Probably not, is, it's hard to say, it depends on how badly the underlying structure is. From the inside, it all looks good, you were up there last week with me, inside it all looks good. There was the railing and the decorative parts on the outside that are showing the worst of the wear. I don't know, is when they redid the clock faces, the contractor then said that we should probably look at the copper on top of the dome. It doesn't appear to be leaking, so we might maybe get away with that, but, you know. I did get in contact with Jeff, and we're trying to set up a time when we can look at that.
The other needs, we know we're gonna need to replace the front town hall steps in the coming years. The building should be sealed and waterproofed, and then we have a, we need a new video security system in town hall. And we do have, we do have as well, eighty thousand dollars in contingency, and then we have, how much do we have to Lena Clark, something like thirty-eight thousand?
I thought it was fifty.
Fifty thousand, good.
It might be thirty-eight.
So might be able to pull from contingency and Lena Clark to be able to help share some of these costs, to get that overall number down. We pulled from undesigned fund balance to offset the tax rate to help stay under LV one, so that's that last number. So you can see the grand number there, which we may be able to find that for the fund balance, but that would effectively almost zero us out for, you know, we're starting from almost zero going into fiscal year twenty-six for fund balance. So obviously, these numbers will be revised over the coming weeks, to just, we obviously want to make sure we set ourselves up for the next fiscal year.
Isn't there a minimum amount that we need to keep in undesigned funds?
Yes, yeah, so when I refer to spendable, there's spendable, but then the other part's just, forget about it.
So when you say we are zeroed out, you mean we're at the minimum amount that we're allowed to have in undesigned funds? Not that there's literally zero dollars.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear. Thank you for clarifying that. Because that was not clear the way you said that.
Yeah, zero dollars for spendable fund balance. So that, that covers the, the high load, the high, high notes.
Well, I'm sure we'll tear it all apart as it comes up, so, but thank you for the overview.
So what I heard for, what we want to do for the wage increases is to look at equity, market rate, and then come back at some sort of coba, lower coba across the board, and then equitable increases where they may.
Well, it depends on what we find.
Yeah, it's not about lower or higher, it's just about justifying what we're doing.
Right.
You know what I mean? If you're gonna say everybody gets four percent, four and a half percent, five percent, or whatever, you know, show us something that says that that's justified in the area with the jobs, whatever, it might need to be more than that, it might need to be less than that.
Right.
You know, it might be, need to be more selective than that, you know what I mean? Some people might be already getting paid more, or are already getting paid enough or more than what their market value is for that job, and they're getting the same flat rating increase as everybody else is. They might not get that, they might not, you know, warrant that same increase. Other people might be getting paid less than their market value and need a slightly higher increase, you know what I mean?
Right, so if you, if you do like a three percent increase across the board, with the availability of two percent to assist with equitable, equity raises if need be. But again, you don't need that, know that until we get more information.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that, it's not that your number is wrong, or it needs to be lower or higher, it just needs to be more justified.
Right.
You know, you know, what we have in front of us is basically you just saying, I'm gonna give this, this amount of people this, this amount of raise, and we either have to go okay or no, and we don't have the information to make that decision, so...
And another thing, when we look at the payroll warrant, the numbers are all over the place. So it would be nice to know how fun things are, or not, right?
Frank, right now, I mean, based on the last town report, the highest paid people in the town are the police officers, because they get overtime, and, you know, they, they do, they do a ton of stuff.
Usually, police and fire are usually in every town, even in, like, you see Portsmouth and Dover, and you'll see the town, you know, the city manager makes this, but the highest paid person or the second or third one is a sergeant, not even like, not even the police chief, and you're like, how did that happen?
Well, it's because that guy doesn't have a wife and kids and family, he's like, I could work a hundred hours a week, I ain't got nothing else going on, I'm gonna retire. I'm going to retire by the time I'm 55.
Boy, they're three years away from retirement, and they are both stood up their ankles.
Yes.
They work in every GMP detail out there.
Look at this. This random officer made $150,000 last year. The police chief only made 125. This is crazy.
Yeah. All right, looping back to general expense. Our workers' compensation insurance is decreasing.
Because we do such a great job?
Because of our liability rate.
Yeah, our mod rate's going down.
Because we do such a great job.
No, we didn't have any injuries lately.
That's what I mean.
Exactly.
Are you guys in the safety program they have?
Yes, we are. We're on tier two. We're working on tier three.
Yeah. It helps.
So why are legal fees dropping so much?
We increased it. For one, we spent that 72 in 23. That's also, we were able to get some of that, all of that back. And we had a lot going on, quite frankly, in 23. That's not as much going on this year. So I don't anticipate, you can see that year to date, we're at 17,000. So we're tracking.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we had those couple court cases with the appeals board, and they got dragged on and on and on and back and forth, and we spent a lot of money on lawyers for stupid stuff.
Where have the increases been this year? What you're saying, that it went up, it's going to go down?
It went up in fiscal year 23. So this fiscal year, it's, we're actually, compared to last year, it's about half. So it's, Bernstein Shore's great. They cover, we have a dedicated land use attorney, dedicated labor attorney, dedicated finance attorneys, foreclosure attorneys. So we deal with different specialists.
And we also have Betsy now, so a lot of the HR stuff is going through Betsy as opposed to the attorneys.
Right.
Which is a lot cheaper. Yeah.
I see emergency services getting crushed with 911 calls.
Yeah, PSAP, that's contractual increase. Audit services.
Our key for the audit, so we know that that's, and we, we're going to have, we're going to have to have the single audit, so that's more money.
Because you're getting the federal grants?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We're expecting to spend quite a bit of federal money this year.
Yeah.
Street lights.
What were they a couple of years ago before we got the LEDs or whatever? What was it, like $60,000 or something?
Oh, yeah, it was huge.
You're going to crush your app.
Those lights paid for themselves. It only took three years, so. Any other questions about general expense?
You said the health insurance. You guys are on a rating, so it was, the town pays so much, the employee pays so much, and then it went up. You guys went up so, so much this, you have two companies, so did both of them go up approximately the same amount?
Um.
Does some have the health trust and some have allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay.
To cover, town pays 85%.
Allegion went up 3%.
So you, Allegion Union.
The health trust went up 4.25%.
And in the, in the CBAs, do they compensate for that, an increase each year? Or do you have a set, like at the beginning of the CBA for the years of the contract? Or is it broken out? Like, like if it's a three-year contract, is one year the town contribute this much, the next year contributes this much?
No, it's, it's flat. It's 85-15.
So you have percentages in the CBAs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And is it equal to the non-union?
Yes.
Okay.
That's split, 85-15. Yeah, that's across, across the board.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, general expense, it's a 1.4% decrease overall. Going on to town administration, this is a 7.88% decrease from last year. We outsourced one full-time position to, for payroll MRI. So that's what you see in the, reflected in the contracted services. Mentioned in my notes, we have one larger scale project that we'll be doing in that, in that fiscal year, which is we'll be working on formalizing a pay scale. I think in the next fiscal 26-year budget, we'll be ready to start decreasing per hours. She handles, she has a lot of the, anything disciplinary, go through her just to make sure we have things lined up.
Is she training Cassidy on these kinds of things so that she can just kind of move over afterwards?
Thank you.
Yeah, Cassidy's, Cassidy's always involved in everything that happens.
So as she trains her, she'll start taking it over and Betsy will start moving up. Yeah, that's a good point.
She's SHRM certified now, right?
Yep, she is.
She's SHRM certified.
Oh, she took, did she take the SP or the CP?
Yep, the first one.
The CP, yeah.
I think she has to wait three years for the second one.
For the second one, yeah, in between.
She's, yeah, she's, from the beginning, she took a lot, just onboarding and just streamlining our process, unifying our processes across the departments. We still are working on that. But yeah, she's taken on more and more and more.
Just kind of fitting into the role?
Yeah.
Good.
I think Betsy and Cassidy hit it off as well.
Yeah, they do.
Well, that's good, because then at some point, she can kind of roll on her own. Then if she has a question, it's a phone call. It's not, it's not necessarily being invoiced from Betsy, because I know Betsy is very generous with her time outside of that. So, you know, that'll save you both legal fees and consultant fees.
The only reason it's not really reflected in this fiscal year budget is just, like I said, I think we have one more larger scale project. When Betsy was brought on board, one of the things we talked about was, one, you know, revise our personnel policy, look at job descriptions, department head trainings.
As this is the time to talk about it, do we want to discuss select board communicate compensation?
Absolutely. Now's the time.
Well, I was more speaking to the board.
Oh.
James is like, oh, I just.
Yeah. It's been the same forever. Do we want to keep it the same, or do we want to talk about an increase of any kind?
Is that the way it is? I'm agreeing.
Oh, we did a level of the job.
Well, we did.
When you look at the dollar, we're rich.
Well, at some point, it might as well just be zero, you know, with the way inflation goes.
It can go that way, too.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions about town administration? Next one, James.
All right, we are on to town hall. The electricity is proposed to go up $1,000. Custodial services, after a very long time, we're switching custodial services. Our past janitor retired. We had been interested in looking at different services anyways, so it was a good opportunity to go out and seek out a different company.
Who'd you go with? And they're doing a good job. I was surprised.
Clean One Janitorial Services, I believe they're out of Sanford, I think.
I want to go back to electricity because I'm confused. In 2023, we budgeted 8,000, almost spent double that, 15,800, so almost 16,000. And then in 2024, we budgeted 12,000. Year to date, we spent 10,000, but you've only requested 13,000 for 2025. So why, one, why is it so much more than what we're budgeting for? And two, why aren't you asking for what we actually need?
That's a good question.
I thought it was going to be two.
We should put 16.
I'll go back and do, we have, we have spreadsheets all set up for electricity, so I'll dump some numbers in there and figure out what's going on. I think that should be 16,000.
I mean, 16 would be more appropriate based on what we paid in 2023, but also, why in 2023 did we pay almost double what we budgeted? Like, did something happen that we weren't aware of, or?
CMF. CMF changed other rates.
Yeah, but I mean, they didn't double their rates.
I am curious about where 2022 was.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, what was 22?
When did, when did the fire station come online?
That's possible, but that's town hall, though.
That was 2020.
And this is town hall?
This is town, yeah, this is town hall.
It would come under, it would come under their budget.
Yeah.
Are you guys leaving the light on when you leave?
Sometimes they are.
Somebody is living, somebody is living in the basement.
We've got mini splits. I'm wondering if maybe that's what.
Mini splits?
Electric.
Yeah. That's when we didn't start.
That's supposed to help, not hurt. Isn't that supposed to help?
What's that?
It helps your fuel cost.
It helps, it helps. It's going to help here.
Helps the fuel.
You know, rob, feed it pretty well.
Yeah, that's right. This is the year we started.
Dehumidifiers.
I'm pretty sure that's.
We're the dehumidifiers.
Yeah. Where can we take 3,000 from somewhere else?
From fuel oil.
The selectmen. That's not in this budget. Bring a jacket.
Well, year to date, it says we only spent 2,700 on fuel. So, I mean.
Yeah, but we're just, we're just getting started on fuel, really.
And the boiler was down for quite a while this summer. That was a burn expense.
What about building supplies? What do we get going on there?
Building maintenance, right?
Yeah. No supplies.
Building supplies, 45, $2.
We only spent $200,000.
Yeah, that looks like a lot of money there, maybe.
Well, there really isn't.
No?
There, no, because I really don't think there is.
Yeah, what do we need?
We can revise.
We'll move some stuff around.
Yeah, we can make it work. Yeah, electricity definitely needs to be increased.
Yep. Also, maybe bring us back numbers for 2022, 21, 2020, so we can see if there was something in 2023 that specifically caused the big jump.
Yeah, I know, electricity most.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Maybe there's just one switch somewhere in the building we need to turn off, and then everything will be fine. I don't know. Is it the 24-hour webcam? I don't know. But whatever it is.
We're going to know.
It's a big difference.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
We'll figure it out.
You can hire people to come in with like detectors to find out where phantom power is going.
Something that does seem wrong.
Yeah. Any other questions about town hall budget?
Debt service, there's by feature of the way that bonds work and paying up interest each year is a little bit of a smaller payment. So you see a 1.3% decrease.
And we don't have a choice on this, so.
Yeah. So is, is the fire department, the fire station, is that our only outstanding bond that needs to be paid off right now?
No. We still have the clock tower, the clock, we did the clock tower, the windows, the auditorium windows, and a fire truck in one bond.
And we have the water bond, but we haven't done anything with that yet.
Yes, but that's water.
Except for from.
Except for from everything else. Got it. Any questions about debt services?
Transfers. And transfer, oh, speaking of bonds, one of the transfers is the, there's an old water bond that we both have.
Yeah, that's going to end in 2026. We transfer, the taxpayer pays half, half the payment for this bond. It ends in 2026. So we've got two more years to budget for it.
Okay. Is it out of transfers?
It's on another night. It's on February 20th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have transfers here.
No.
They just ended up on our agenda for tonight, but not on the, okay.
James, paperwork, come on. Get it together.
Let's go.
Apparently, too, so.
Play the binders, play it all.
Took a moment, didn't bring them back.
She's busy with GA to build binders.
The only thing that's, yeah, transfers that half payment of the water department, that's, that's a bond from 1999. And also includes a $10,000 contingency.
All right, so we're going to do this again three more times at least.
Yep.
At least.
So next meeting, Tuesday, February 6th, we're doing library, police, planning and code assessing, BCM and public works. So I'm assuming we'll have representations from the library, the police, and everybody else to come down and talk to us.
Yep.
Jim, any other questions, comments, concerns, conundrums, riddles, anecdotes? All right, I move that we adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
We already did.
Did it again.